At this time, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting. We have with us tonight Dr. Ron Godbolt from Word of Truth Ministry to lead us in our invocation. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Gracious Father, we thank you for this night, that you blessed us to see this day that we've never seen before. We ask your blessings upon this meeting. Give us your headship and your guidance in every situation. Let your name be glorified in everything that we do. And we give your name all praise for all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The first part of our agenda is going to be presentations of special certificates. I don't know if many of you know how quick it caught up with us, that school got out before we recognized our mayor's youth leadership committee. So we had their certificates tonight, and we're going to recognize any that are here. And we have received word from several that they're, in fact, two have already off to school. So last year at this time, this was when we were making the presentations, and they've already been out of school a week now. All right, the first one will be Morgan Evans. Is Morgan here? William Pryor? Nadia Carter? Kayla Maddie? Emily Gonzalez? I know she's in Greenville. She called right before the meeting. Ashlyn Burgos? Ethan Finney? And Kiara Ramos? I want the audience to know, the important thing about reading their names is this is videoed, and we do want them to know how much we appreciate what they've done this year. This committee is made up of nominees from student leadership groups at Southview, Jack Britt, and Grace Creek. And what we will be doing for next year is including also the Key Club, the ROTC, the IB Academy, and those that need volunteer hours. Because what we're trying to do is grow some young leaders here and encourage them to be a part of everything that happens here in the town. So again, I appreciate everything they did, and also the advisors for all three of those schools. The next thing we have is petition of certificates of completion for the Students and Citizens Academy. And I have, I think, last year, Madam Mayor, you and I handed them out. Okay. That sounds good. I'll come down and we'll do it. Okay. This is a program also, if you, those of you that have been a part of it, it gets better every time. I was in the first one, and I am so jealous of what you guys got to do this time that we didn't get to do them ourselves. I guess it's repeat, you should do it more than once.
Well, we changed it a little bit as we tweaked it. So I'll let you call out the names.
Okay.
And we'll present them at the camera.
Okay, Alyssa Blathens? And who are we, Matty, up here to meet everybody up? Congratulations. Do you have Blathens?
He had a work call.
Okay. Sandy Hardy? Kelly Lawrence? Thank you for participating. Congratulations. Ron Maury? Mr. Maury, thank you for participating. Congratulations. Sean Morris? Congratulations. Thank you, Amy. Lamun Buckwood? I didn't miss his name up too bad. Thank you for participating. Harvey Stewart? Tina Yossit? Congratulations. Thank you for participating. And then these are the sponsors. Reda's Pizza Grinders? That donated meals. The Wing Company? And this is something too, we make sure they get these to hang in their business, but they have been, they do such a great job of helping us. A Catered Fair by Chef Glenn? Firehouse Subs? Robbins on Main? Highway 55? And Harris Teter? A Traymore Village. I can't thank these businesses enough, and as you heard them being called out, if you'll make sure that you go there, because I think it's important that we support the businesses that support us. And again, thank you guys so much for participating, and thank really our town staff for actually coming up with this idea, and Adams came up with it, and has moved forward with it. But this is a great opportunity for all the departments to participate, and each department seems like they compete with each other to get your attention and do a great job. But thank you again, thank you so much. All right. Now, we're going to take just a few minutes break. We always have a small reception for the Citizens Academy, so we have cake and punch. So I'm going to call recess now for about 10 minutes, and then we'll come back and rejoin our regular meeting. It's open to everyone that's here. Please support. Take out some cake. Cal, call our meeting back to order. At this time, we have public hearings. We have a public hearing for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget ordinance. And at this time, I will introduce our town manager and our probably finance director, just town manager. I'll introduce Ms. Adams to talk about our budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Before we begin the public hearing portion, where citizens may come up and speak and address the board regarding the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget, I do have just a couple of items to go over briefly. Some changes from the proposed budget are, there are some additional revenues. There is an additional $8,000 added to property taxes, because we got the updated evaluation from the county. And sales tax, same. We got a new sales tax revenue list, and that is an additional $25,000. So a total of $33,000 has been added to the revenue. Expenses, we have $500 added to salaries in athletics. Town appearance, $4,500. There was an oversight, there was not any money included in the budget for the Appearance Commission. And then Heritage Park, there were some items that we had listed at the budget retreat, and then we had removed them when we were going to do the master plan and wait for the master plan, but the Historic Preservation Commission wishes for that to be added back in. So we've added the $28,000 back into the projects that we can do this coming year in Heritage Park. Some of our budget highlights are, there is no tax increase proposed. The growth in property taxes is 3.81% from prior year, and there's over $1 billion in tax base. There is no new debt, no new positions. Employee benefits includes a 1.75% cost of living increase, and health insurance decreased Some of the capital improvements and new projects that are included in the budget are new carpet for town hall, the ADA compliance survey, three replacement police vehicles, one replacement Parks and Rec vehicle, the purchase of a new backhoe to be shared by Stormwater and the Street Department, and the Heritage Park Master Plan and improvements, and the strategic planning. And that is in a nutshell. There wasn't a whole lot of changes from our budget workshop. So at this time, Madam Mayor, if you, unless the members of the board have questions, you're welcome to open it up to public comment.
Do you have any questions from any commissioner?
I don't have a question per se, but I spoke with the town manager last week and Parks and Rec Director tonight, like to see us in the future, do online registration for Parks and Rec programs. I think that would bring our number of participation up greatly. And it doesn't cost more to start it than what we clear off of it.
I believe there is, in the Tyler, the Tyler software that we have, there is a module for Parks and Rec that we've included in this budget.
Yeah, I spoke to Lamar about it a little earlier. But I think that's another way that we can build the total participation of Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir.
From sports, right on up to whatever else we may have over there that they could register online and pay online.
Yes, sir.
Do all the background checked if necessary. So I'd like to see us, if possible, get that going as quick as we can.
Yeah.
Actually, just to give you a little bit more on that, we do have in the budget, I think it's about $11,000 for Parks and Rec for new software, actually for software, not new software, for software to begin with. And part of that will be online registrations.
Yeah.
And we're going to start, of course, once July gets here, you know, we can fund it, and we've got a schedule in place. Worst-case scenario, we start at January with the new year, but if we can get it implemented prior to that, we're going to do that as well.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Yep, that is included in the budget.
Do we have an e-commerce system in place already for paying different types of fees with our citizens online? Do we have any, do we have an emergency service online that's secure for the town?
Oh, for any credit card payments? It's all third-party, so none of it's stored here. It's through the bank. So we don't have any customer information stored.
But our citizens have some services they can pay online?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from our commissioners? Okay. All right, at this time, we will open the floor, and that will be for any of our citizens that would have a comment in reference to our budget or any questions. If you just, when you come to the microphone, say your name and your address, and then if we can't answer it between Mr. Holland and Ms. Adams, we will. So anyone at this time that would like to speak?
Well, I take that as a good sign. It's a good sign. I guess the no tax increase, and we know that we've had some increased revenue, and that you heard the things that we are planning on spending money on, everybody must be okay with that. So at this time, we need to have a consideration to adopt this budget. So what's the?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt our 2019-2020 budget. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have the consideration to adopt the proposed fiscal year fee schedule, and if you have questions about that, it is located in the back of your book that was given to you when we came in. Is there any discussion in reference to the fee schedule?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve or to adopt the proposed 2019-2020 fiscal year fee schedule. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Very well. And this is again, Hope Mills has a budget, it's approved, it's balanced, no tax increase, and it's June 3rd, so we're almost a month ahead of what would be expected by the end of the month. So congratulations to our staff, and Mr. Holland, and all the department heads that have been very involved in this, and Ms. Adams. We appreciate all the hard work, and to our citizens, just know that physically, we're trying to do everything we can to make best use of your tax dollars, and a balanced budget is one way that we can prove that.
Madam Mayor, I believe, the more commercial business that we can bring into town, the longer we're going to be able to keep our tax rate down. So anytime you hear us discussing about commercial property, please understand that it's for everybody's good, your shopping goods and your tax goods.
Next, we have public hearing case P-19-28, revision amendment to the Town of Hope Mills zoning ordinance regarding provisions related to the Board of Adjustment specifically Article 17, Board of Adjustment in its entirety. And I'll turn that over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, board members. I won't try to keep you, I won't keep you too long. This is obviously something that the board requested. In terms of background, the initial Board of Adjustment ordinance for the town outlined the powers and duties pursuant to General Statute 168 as 388. It also mandated that the ordinance be exercised by five members of the Board of Commissioners. Under the rules and procedures of the previous or current ordinance, the mayor pro temp serves as a chairperson with the town clerk serving as a secretary. In recent months, the town board has identified five volunteers from the community that are willing to serve as the new members of the Board of Adjustment. The proposed ordinance before you this evening grants the Board of Commissioners the right to appoint these five new members and two alternates to serve in the event that one or more of the appointed members are unavailable. The town clerk will still serve as the secretary of the Board of Adjustment under the new ordinance, which also outlines the appointment of a chairperson and vice chair by the newly appointed board. Members are appointed to three-year terms and are eligible for reappointment at the close of those terms. The board, Cumberland County Joint Planning Board recommended approval at their May 21st hearing, and staff here is recommending approval as well. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Anyone have questions in reference to this?
Before we move on in this, I want to make one correction on here. We need to change the word appoint to the word elect in section 102A, 1702. The Board of Adjustment elect a chairperson. Not a substantive change, but just to clarify that they elect from amongst themselves.
All members that reside in the town of Hope Mills, correct?
Correct.
Madam Mayor, make a motion, case P-19-28, to approve the text amendment to the Hope
Mills zoning ordinance, which will establish an appointed Board of Adjustment chosen by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners, finding it is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan designated as the 2030 Growth Vision Plan, specifically including Policy Area Two: Well-Managed Growth and Development, and the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2014, goal of ensuring compatibility of land uses as well as promoting development that has a positive impact on the social, natural, and environmental conditions in the immediate surrounding area. The staff further finds that the approval of the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest based on the foregoing information, and that by ensuring certain uses are limited to areas where the small-town character will not be affected. Additionally, this amendment was prepared and submitted by the town of Hope Mills. This proposed text amendment will not cause any changes to the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, Matt.
Okay, have a motion on the floor? Yes, sir.
We're going to have a public hearing.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Yes, we are.
We were, we are, yes, we are. We're just going. At this time, we have the microphone open for anyone that has a comment or concern in reference to this change. And for those of you that aren't aware, the Board of Adjustment most recently was this board minus the mayor, with the mayor pro temp serving as the chair. This board decided that they wanted to go back to it being a Citizens Board of Adjustment rather than the board being in charge. So that's why the change in the ordinance, and that would mean that the ordinance now states it's a Citizens Board with those members residing in Hope Mills, and then their chair and vice chair is elected by that board, the ones that are the new members. So anybody have any concerns, thoughts? Seeing none? Now we have a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, our ready's on the floor. We jumped the gun on the motion, but we've got the motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. And at this time, I'd like to read the names of those that have been recommended to be on the Board of Adjustment, and these all would be seated, and their seat would start now, and then according to this, they'll serve for three years. Brian Marley, Carla Welch, Elizabeth Cooper, Joanne Scarrola, Elise Craver. Alternates would be Harold M. Dove and Susan Moody. So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve those mentioned.
Have a motion, and this will be our new Board of Adjustments. The important thing about this motion and this approval is that they will have their first training on next board meeting at 6:00 PM, and they'll have their first case at...
I believe the training will be at 5:00.
Training at 5:00 and case at 6:00. So they'll, as soon as they find out they've been approved, they start working right away. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Congratulations to those that are here in the audience, and know that we'll be getting in touch with the rest, tell them their schedule. Thank you. All righty. Next, we have our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. The Lake Bulkhead Project. Last week, I asked that if you had an opportunity to please go by the lake and view the grating on the slope of the lake embankment from the gazebo down to the bulkhead. And I do believe that everyone was pleased with how it looks. The construction on the Bulkhead Project continues slightly ahead of schedule. Currently, the contractor has some equipment out for repair. A new dual trash and recycling receptacle has been added to the lake pier. We will be adding more of those types of receptacles around the various parks in an effort to promote recycling. Rockfish Road Sidewalk Project. Town Attorney Hartzog is currently reviewing the contract with Charles W. Hughes Construction LLC, so that we may be able to determine our next course of action concerning this project. We should have something to bring to the Board of Commissioners for the next regular meeting on June the 7th. Johnson Street Sidewalk Project. The 90% drawings have been sent to NC DOT for their review. The environmental report has been completed and reviewed by NC DOT and returned with comments for action. The new flat roof of the Parks and Recreation Building has been completed. Public Works, the Public Works Director is in the process of inspection and completing a punch list. I have executed the agreement with LYSIC, the Structural Engineering Firm, that was approved by the board to do the inspection of the Episcopal Parish House. They are in the process of scheduling a date when they will be coming to do their inspection of the Episcopal Parish House. The electrical circuits for the Eel Ladder have been repaired. The downstream pump has been removed for replacement, and the upstream pump has been operationally checked. We are expecting our third quote for the hazardous material remediation on the Fountain Lane House by tomorrow, June the 4th. Public Works Director Don Sisko is continuing to work on obtaining additional proposals for the walking trail at the former golf course property. Staff has been in contact with two separate property owners concerning site distance public safety issues regarding signs. Currently, the entrance sign for the Black Bridge Road subdivision is creating site distance issues tied to the location and the height of the sign. The sign is approximately five feet in height, but is situated in a location that blocks the view of traffic traveling from the southwest for anyone exiting the subdivision. Staff has contacted the developer to notify them of this issue. The same issue exists at 2587 Hope Mills Road as well, with staff taking the same approach. Hurricane season has begun, and we have updated our hurricane preparedness information and shared it on our Facebook page. Staff is working on ordering the plaques for the donated art sculptures. As soon as we have a timeframe for installation, we will place the proposed ribbon cuttings back on the agenda for board consideration. And in light of the tragic and horrific mass shooting in Virginia Beach, we are in the process of reviewing our safety measures. We have posted two videos that were generously given to the town to use from Mr. Bill McQueen on both the Administration and the Veterans Affairs Committee Facebook pages, as well as on the town's website. The videos are of the recently-held Veterans Outreach Day event held on May 3rd at VFW 10-630, and the Veterans Memorial Day Ceremony held on Monday, May the 27th. And a very special thank you to him for doing that for us. A special thank you also to the Hope Mills Community Emergency Response Team for their assistance with Pet Fest and the Hope Mills Good to Grow Farmers Market held this past Saturday, June the 1st. Both events were extremely successful and had tremendous attendance. And the new dates for installation of the telephone system for all, the new telephone system for all town offices are June 11th and June 12th, and it can't come soon enough. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on our agenda, we have public comments. And again, I'll remind you that there's a three-minute time limit, and you come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and give your address. The first person we have is Ron Maury.
My name's Ron Maury, 4753 Legion Road. Y'all take a break. I want to thank the mayor and all the department heads in this room for the academy. In my 75 years, and more years in the Army and fire departments and that, I've been a trainer, I've got a drawer full of certificates at home. This is one of the most outstanding programs I've ever seen. I cannot thank the department heads enough. They answered all our questions, no matter how dumb they were, and all the veteran employees that stayed over here overnight to let us play with their toys. The fire department, or the police department, everybody loved them because they brought their training aids over. It was the first time since 1975 I got to shoot somebody and I didn't get in trouble. But it is an outstanding program. My wife and I, the 28th of July, we'll be here four years. We love this town. And with people like this working for the town, I saw their application. I'm glad the VA says I can't work no more. I didn't go through all that for a top-secret clearance. And this young lady sitting over here, I got to spend two months with, even though she's from the wrong Virginia, we had a great time communicating together, and I just want to thank the mayor and all the department heads available here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julia Gilmore?
Julia Gilmore, 5531 Heather Street, Hope Mills.
even though she's from the wrong Virginia, we had a great time communicating together. And I just want to thank the mayor and all the department heads available here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julia Gilmore?
Julia Gilmore, 5531 Heather Street, Hope Mills. First and foremost, I want to thank our great town manager for a splendid event that we had Saturday. I came out of that and I was absolutely amazed. I know she had a lot of help from the staff, but that was some kind of event. I was so proud of our little town. That was something you'd see in Fayetteville. There were so many activities out here. It was so well-run, orchestrated. They even had misting tents and the pools for the pets. I was truly impressed by everything I saw here. And I know that took an immense amount of work, but kudos to you. And thank you for doing it.
I can't take credit for that, it's my staff and, and all the volunteers.
Well, it was amazing, and whomever was responsible, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I hope we can have something to that magnitude again. It was really amazing. The second thing is I want to publicly congratulate my mayor. I was here for the $26,000 report that was read. And she was completely exonerated, which I had no doubt. I had absolutely no doubt. Was never a question in my mind. But I wanted to congratulate you publicly. And thank you for your service, and thank you for your eloquent position and attitude that you have. You make me proud.
Thank you.
And the third thing is, is this little art project that Ms. Blevins has touted on Facebook, I love it. Paint the Town. I've seen some of the artwork in Fayetteville. Gosh, it really makes a difference. And we have some not very pretty areas in Hope Mills. Kind of urban blight things going on, you know, the sides of buildings, you know, just walkways. I think that that would really be an attractive way to help our little town not look so drab and dirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carla Welch.
Carla Welch, 3626 Lake Forest Road, Mayor, Commissioner's staff. The report at the May 29th Special Board Meeting by the independent investigator found no ethical or illegal actions on the part of any of the parties involved in the town's dealings with the Lone Survivor Foundation, but did find a procedural error in the presentation of the proposal to the Board of Commissioners. As a resort, as a result, there was little opportunity for the board members to digest the importance of what was being offered in terms of an economic opportunity to the town of Hope Mills. Nor were they up to date about the implications of future uses on the lake bed, which had been dried up and abandoned at least since the 70s. The positive response from the staff during initial meetings with the Economic Development Council dwindled quickly as the board, feeling backed into a corner, soon thereafter rejected the offer. We later learned from the October 1st, 2018 Special Meeting Minutes that Rachel Cotter, representing the McAdams family with some of its initial community responses to its study, surprisingly had not included the lake bed in its plan for recreational development because it was still shown as other town-owned properties. Though it was shown in the Southwest Land Use Plan as parkland, it never was dedicated for use and a developed master plan adopted for those properties. There isn't a basis for including it under the umbrella of Parks and Recreation. So here we are, almost four months after the board rejected the offer at a closed meeting in June, now finding out the lake bed's not even being considered in its comprehensive Parks and Rec Plan. Isn't that one of the main reasons stated by the board for not accepting the offer? Because they wanted to wait for the results of this plan and the possibility as a reservoir. Now the lake bed is being talked about, but it wasn't for 40 some odd years. So what have we learned about the 28,000 investigation that we are, that we are not perfect? That's what we've learned, the board, the mayor, the staff, we're not perfect. We all have flaws, we all can do better. As a result of questions about the initial closed session meeting, now Hope Mills videotapes them like they once did. Maybe expressed verbal agreement should be in writing to avoid further confusion. Never have, having been presented with a prospective purchase or lease from the Economic Development Committee in the past, we have learned the correct protocol with another transaction having already taken place without accusations of improprieties or misconduct. We must all learn from these costly mistakes. The greatest lesson is to be inclusive, not divisive. We have too much of that in Washington DC. The mayor and board were elected to represent our town and its citizens to talking, by talking to each other, not behind their backs. You would not have needed this investigation or the lack of confidence vote. Unless an elected official intentionally sets out to hurt our town, let it go. There's too much real work that needs to be done. There is no I in team. Commissioners, you're all so not perfect. Not only did we spend over 28,000 for the investigation, but we lost a golden opportunity to transform an all but forgotten lake bed into much-needed economic development for our town. We not only had a bird in the hand and lost it, but we may have also lost the two in the bush while waiting for the magic solution for lake bed number two. Thank you.
That concludes our public comments. Next, we have our consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda, if there's anything that you'd like moved to new business, we may do so. Consideration of approval of the closed session minutes for the March 18th, 2019 Regular Meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the closed session minutes for the March 25th, 2019 Special Meeting. Consideration of the approval of the minutes from the April 8th, 2019 Special Meeting. Consideration of the approval of the minutes for the May 20th, 2019 Regular Meeting. Consideration of approval of ordinance 2019-04, adopting and enacting a new code for the town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective. Consideration of approval of Resolution 2019-13 and Budget Amendment Number 13-1819, accepting the donation of $1,000 to assist with repair of the veterans monument. Consideration of approval for a third-party encroachment agreement for sidewalks tied to a proposed Circle Gas Station approved December the 3rd, 2018 by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners. Consideration of approval of third-party encroachment agreement for sidewalks on property approved for a billboard to be constructed by Interstate Outdoor Incorporated. And consideration of approval of Resolution 2019-16, accepting the donation of rock salt. Is there anything that you'd like moved from the consent agenda to our new business? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve, approve the consent agenda as read.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed? There is no old business, new business. Discussion and possible action regarding the cancellation or rescheduling of the July 1st Regular Board of Commissioners Meeting.
Madam Mayor, with everything going on that week, I wanted to give you all the opportunity to discuss. You can take no action, it's completely up to the board. Or you can cancel, or you can reschedule. And Ms. Starling pointed out when we were preparing this that we have had 13 special meetings already this year. So just in case, you know, someone was worried about the lack of meetings, we've not had a lack of meetings, so. Completely at your pleasure.
What are the days, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
What are the days surrounding July 1st?
I believe all we're doing is just the actual July 4th event. We were, which is, that's on Thursday. I believe that the Special Events Committee decided not to try to do anything else around that timeframe.
Right, just the fourth.
Yeah, just, just the actual July 4th.
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Right now, my plans are not to be here the first day of July or second day of July. We're talking about running to Kentucky. But it's fine with me if we cancel that meeting, it's one I won't have to work around. If it's appropriate, I'll make that a motion.
That's fine with me, too.
Okay, so we have a motion to cancel the July 1st meeting. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed? We'll just cancel the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
Alrighty then. That takes care of new business. Now we've got reports and information items. Of course, this week, we have the food truck rodeo, it's gonna be Thursday. We also have the special meetings that are listed, and they're on your form, and they're also listed on our website, the different committee meetings. County Liaison updates. Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell, do you have an update for the Historic Preservation Commission and Municipal Advisory Committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor. For the Historical Preservation Commission meeting from May the 8th, all members were present. On the commission's status, Lisa Warrin made pictures of the historical sites and sent them to the town lawyer for inclusion and submission to the State Historic Preservation Office. Regards to the parish house, Pat Hall reported that $4,905 was approved at town board meeting Monday night, that would have been the first meeting in May, I guess, for payment to an engineer for analysis of the building repairs, including estimated cost. Commissioner Bellflower has advised that he is working toward a possible partnership on repairs pending engineer analysis. On the Trade Street Museum, the new tin roof has been completed, looks good. Drew Holland reported that $55,000 is budgeted for this year for interior work such as cabinets, displays, et cetera, in regards to the museum. On Heritage Park, Finance Director Drew Holland reported that Adams Group has quoted $45,000, cost of a master plan for Heritage Park, that the cost remains the same whether it is 100 or 10 acres. The commission requests that the church property and all creek banks owned by the town be included as part of the Heritage Park Master Plan, which we did that at the next board meeting. Also, that the conceptual plan for terracing of the creek bank immediately behind church property submitted by Mason Steel be incorporated in the master plan. We also adopted that at the board meeting that followed. And Drew indicated that he would try to make that happen, and it did happen. Chairman Hall read from the town manager's report given at Monday night's meeting, stating that Heritage Park is ideally situated for the 2020 part of grant rather than the golf course, according to the representative who visited on April 26. Items budgeted by Public Works Director Don Sisko were discussed. Finance Director Drew Holland's staff wanted to know if the commission wished to prioritize the park versus Trade Street House or proceed with all. Consensus was to proceed with all at once. They discussed fundraisers. Member Patricia Grimes reported on quotes for T-shirts. And member Sharon Reeves accepted coordination of a logo contest project and would contact the art teachers at schools through the proper channels. Also, announcement to the public will be made through town website, bulletins, and media. That logo contest is in regards to developing a logo for the Hope Mills Historic Preservation Commission, of course. September 13th, 2019 was set as the deadline for the entries. Commission will judge the entries, cash prizes would be $100, $50, and $25 for first, second, and third place respectively. Orders for T-shirts and possibly other items will commence once logo and colors are determined. Finance Director Holland will look into the prior balance the committee had before, from former fundraisers, back when we had the rubber ducky racing and all that. They mentioned the Pat Calder Award, the commission-approved award for 2018, which did not happen last year due to hurricane and other issues. Thus, two trophies will be purchased, two awards will be made at the June, at a June board meeting. So I suppose that'll be the next one. And two winners will ride in the Fourth of July Parade as grand marshals. And Finance Director Holland will try to locate the plaque that has the ongoing names for the Pat Calder Award. And in regards to the Municipal Advisory Committee, we have a meeting, a breakfast Thursday morning, we did not meet last month.
Yep.
It's like a bimonthly kind of thing. I think they're trying to alternate that between the mayor's coalition. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have Commissioner Edwards with the Lake Advisory Committee and Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council.
The Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council will be meeting this Thursday in Sampson County. We meet every quarter. And as far as the Lake Advisory Committee, I was doing a makeup session with the Citizens Academy with the fire department, which was fantastic. But with the town manager's approval, I would like to ask Don Sisko if there was anything they wanted the board to highlight on. There was anything they wanted to bring towards the board, though, was there?
Some side stuff that they bring, but I can't.
Yeah. I, well, I can maybe speak on that just briefly. There was some discussion of some additional signage for the No Wake, and we can easily do that. And as Don, Don and I have already discussed where we would locate, you know, down at the lake, an additional sign or two. And then there was also some discussion about emergency contact information. And the emergency contact information is 911. So if the, if there is any type of enforcement issue or an emergency, the lake attendant or whomever needs to contact 911, that is how our police department is dispatched. So, and they are in charge of handling those types of issues. So is that correct, Chief? 911?
Is that what happened the other day, Tom Andrew Adams, with the, did the two citizens have like heat stroke or something on the backside of the lake or something?
No, I don't believe it was heat stroke. I believe they got disoriented.
I mean, did somebody call 911?
They, I'm not sure how our fire department got involved, but the fire department ended up assisting the female in a ride home, apparently, or something. And there was no, they did not have to get the boat, you know, or any, anything. It wasn't that type of a rescue. So the male declined assistance, apparently, so, yeah. But I don't believe it was heat stroke or anything like that. It was nighttime when this happened, so.
Thank you.
Yep, and I, I think that was it. What they wanted to bring forth, so. Yep.
Okay, next, we have Commissioner Legg with the Appearance Committee and the Festival Committee.
I have not met with the Appearance Committee this past month. We'll have another meeting set up with them in June, later part of June. And the Festival Committee met earlier tonight, and there was so much discussion and stuff going on. Here's what they talked about. Page and three quarters. My pen wasn't working fast enough to keep up. So it's the board's approval, I'd like to ask the Chair, Curly Mitchell, to come forward and do some touching up on the highlights of what was discussed tonight. Some of those people talk so low, you can't hear them.
Curly Mitchell, Chairman of the Festival Committee. First of all, we need new members. We need to get new active, wanna-be-involved members. Recruiting Kathy back there, she was a very addition to our, what, fundraiser committee we had years ago? So we get someone with energy like that, we'd be good to go. We're having a World Homeless Day. POC is Dr. McCray, and I think that's an excellent event. She wanted to do something different because everybody's doing something coming county-wide, I think, probably. Is it statewide? National. So we want to do something in Hope Mills, but we want to do something different. Want to offer something different. So if you can think of a charity organization that we can do that cause to, suggestions, recommendations, we'll, we'll reach out to the community. We are planning a polar bear, is it polar bear plunge? I think that's what it is, planning a polar bear plunge.
Oh, yes.
To be, to be announced.
Oh, yes. Look forward to that.
Let me see. We also talked tonight about how... We also talked tonight about having a table with all the information. Dr. McCray recommended that with all the committees that are available, information that people can walk by, get applications, get the information, so when we request people to sign up, if they are already familiar with it, and they have the application in hand. Church on the Lake, we're planning on doing that all meals weekend. And matter of fact, we lost so much momentum because we're the council and pushback our events, that we're trying to capture something from what we did last year. We definitely want to make Hope Mills a community of fun, community of love, a community of one. And we're gonna get there if we work together as one community. And of course, we're planning on having a fall festival, that is to be determined. But right now, we have an opportunity to have a good financial sponsor that we might sponsor the whole thing, won't cost us nothing but our time to help them put this together. That's all I have for the group. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. A lot of people have got, have good ideas on that committee. Sandy Hardy and Brent and Dr. McCray. It's just trying to work them in around the bulkhead and not double-scheduling anything. So, thank you again, sir, appreciate it.
And Ms. Johnson, would you have anything that you don't stay for the Appearance Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, if you could talk louder.
I've talked loud enough.
Okay.
This past meeting, we discussed, at the first weekend in August, we want to have sponsor a agriculture event where we work with the Cumberland County Agriculture Department, the botanical gardens, what we want is to want several people to come and talk to a group here in the reg, if we can use that. And they'll get their hands in the dirt, we're gonna do a project. And we're hoping that it'll be a good tomato sandwich day. We're gonna get someone to sponsor the Duke's mayonnaise, someone to sponsor the bread, and someone to sponsor tomatoes that are this big, will only take one slice.
Oh, yeah, we're talking now. Oh, yeah.
And then we're planning a memorial garden, started working on that. We had to find a spot for it, but we want it to be made available for our citizens when we have someone that passes away, that we can donate money or whatever to put a plant in our memorial garden for that person, with a small plaque that goes underneath that in remembrance of or in honor of on that area. We also discussed our participation in 4th of July parade. We have purchased handout seed packets, which are butterfly gardens. So, and it's all the way up till next year. We know they won't be planting right now, but they'll have their seeds for the butterfly garden next spring. And that's just about what I'll discuss in the past week.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Commissioner Larson and Parks and Rec.
They did not meet because it was Memorial Day.
Okay. Next, Commissioner Bellflowers with Veterans Committee and Rulak.
I'll start off with Rulak. Well, we met on May 16th at Grandson's this time, on Ramsey Street, different location, but it was a packed event. Some of the presentations was the Moore County UDO amendments regarding major subdivisions. A comment was, a couple comments were made about Hope Mills and the adoption of monument signs. And I guess that gained some interest with some discussion from Moore County. I thought that was pretty good. Another presentation, Fort Bragg's community planning process. Minutes were approved, the financial report was approved, they elected a new executive director, adopted the next year's dues, which I think stayed the same for all municipalities, and adopted a budget. And the next meeting is August 15th. So that's it for Rulak. Veterans Affairs Commission meeting met on May 23rd. Some of the comments that were discussed was the Veterans Outreach Day, there were some thoughts and comments shared about that, collectively, how good it was. Of course, Memorial Day was talked about. Heroes Homecoming Events was discussed, and this Friday is the next Heroes Homecoming meeting, on June 7th. Tabled the Artillery Piece Painting and moved the Veteran Volunteer Family of the Year to next year. Discussed some fundraising ideas because there's gonna have to be a new stone put out in the park. Proclamation for the September Suicide Awareness Month event was discussed. The Purple Heart Dinner on August 24th, on August 24th, at the Crown. Last year, the town purchased a table, and the Veterans Affairs Commission would like the town to purchase a table as well this year. Some new business was discussion of the Gold Star Family Event. That's gonna happen in Heroes Homecoming Week, there's some discussion about that, what day that's gonna be on in November. The moral structure repair seems to be, there's a crack on the monument that needs to be inspected. And then there was some discussion about additional nameplates that need to be researched and put on the stone that's out there now. And this next meeting that we go into in June, I think there'll be some recommendations for, at least, I know at least two names. That's not on there, that should be on there. And I think there may be a few more. And I don't want to get ahead of the meeting because that's, that'll be up to the committee to vote on, but at the next meeting, they'll go through that, and then I'll bring that back to the board. And that's it for both of the committees.
Kay reported on FAMPO at my, the last meeting. Our Tier One meeting was held on 21st. And that meeting, this time, they're working on our strategic plan for the whole committee and how we're gonna move forward. And we worked on a vision and a mission, and we all contributed in work groups. And they included our town clerk this time in a work group, so that she got to participate also. The thing that I think we've got to do at Hope, in Hope Mills, and it was kinda odd because having been involved in school system all the time, we always had to have a vision, a mission, and our goals, and our objectives, and all that. And when they asked me what the vision of Hope Mills was, I don't think we have one written down somewhere that we've done recently.
We did one in 13.
But as far as one that we actually would be able to just say. So I think that's where with our strategic plan coming up, part of that plan is going to be tying it all back together so that we all speak the same language. But I think if you ask anybody in town, it would be difficult for somebody to say what it is. And that was something that I learned from this meeting, is that this is probably one of the real good things that'll come from our strategic planning sessions that are coming up, is that we'll come up with these things that will move us forward as far as our plan. Also, with that Tier One meeting, they identified other ways that as a county, we're gonna start looking for, taking advantage of our title of being a Tier One community or county, and see if we can advance some funding that would be fitting for the whole county and then also for the smaller municipalities. But it is a great working committee, and it's got a lot of people from all over Cumberland County on that committee. The other thing that I attended this past week that I just want to share with you is I went to the Change of Command at Fort Bragg. And if that is not one of the most patriotic, formal services, I was very honored to be there. They recognized the mayor of Hope Mills, Spring Lake, and Fayetteville. But it was exciting because when they said attention, everybody looked like, not only they were soldiers, but everybody in the audience looked like soldiers. But just the music, the pomp, the circumstance, it was a great event for me, and I really enjoyed being there. But with that, that's, the next FAMPO meeting will not be until later on this month, so that's all that I have. Next, we have staff comments. Do you have anything?
I would like to also thank the staff that worked on the Citizens Academy. It was a great experience and very educational for me, and helped me learn more about all of our city departments and what everyone does.
I think, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Okay, official comments, I'll start with Commissioner Legg.
I didn't get to attend the event here this weekend, but I drove by while I was working. And there was a crowd out there, very big crowd. I'm glad that we're able to offer something like that for our citizens, and hopefully it can be continued, but if it does, we're gonna have to buy more land. We already outgrew this out here. That'll be it, and I thank everyone for coming out and enjoy the cool weather that's on the way, please.
Commissioner Larson?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Bellflowers?
Well, three. I'll start off with the City View Magazine, breakfast was excellent. You know, afterwards from that breakfast, I'd like, I'd really like to see us try to do something like that here. It was really, really informational, and it was a real nice form to be at. The second thing is that we all should know what Thursday is this week. It is the 75th anniversary of Normandy, D-Day. At the Old Capitol Building in Raleigh, there's going to be the reading of the names at noon. I'll be there along with, and I'll walk over with Representative John Zoka as the 43 names will be read in honor and remembrance. There's also gonna be some newspaper articles that you'll see published as well, especially featuring nine of the 43, there are nine pictures that was researched, and you'll see who they are, too. And lastly, the adoption of this budget was great. And it's not because of me or anybody on this board. All the credit goes to every one of you that's here, all of you. Because that's what a total team comes together, this is where we are. Everybody didn't get everything they wanted, but like the Rolling Stones song says, you don't always get what you want, you get what you need. So I want to thank all of you for the hard work on the budget. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I'd like to say, did what Jesse said as far as the budget and what's going on in town. I also went to the City View Breakfast, and it was, it was very good.
It was good.
And you really met a lot of really interesting people. And I'd like to say that at the Pet Fest and the market, it was fantastic. And those dogs, I'm speaking for them, they really thought it was great, and they're glad you had the watering tanks and the sprinkles because they were getting hot. And they wanted me to relay that to y'all.
I know they had the sprinklers, I'd have been down here walking through their darn things.
I don't think they would let you injure.
I remember a movie where somebody spoke for the trees.
Oh, really?
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I mean, in regards to our budget, I think we're at an emerging growth stage in Hope Mills.
Yep.
Like Town Manager Adams said, we have about a billion on the rolls, and we already have a request for 110 acres of mixed-use commercial property to come into town perhaps, if it's the will of the board. We've got Ariat Corporation Drive, and we've got Exit 41. I could very easily see us doubling our tax values in the next five to six years, especially with the 295 corridor coming around. And then we'll be able to have and be able to afford, hopefully, some amenities that we can't quite afford right now. And I do appreciate all the staff working so hard on the budget that was presented to us. Do we have any idea when McAdams will be coming back, Town Manager Adams, to talk to us about the comprehensive plan or master plan?
When I spoke to her at the league conference, she said they were finishing up everything, and she would be in touch with us.
So that might be, what, the meeting in July?
She said within the next month or so, so.
Okay.
I'll touch base with her, perhaps, maybe the next meeting? If not, then it would be the second meeting in July, I think.
If you just give us an update, maybe a front update on that?
Yep.
Something I've been thinking about a lot, we can't always make the liaison meetings, and something our team might want to consider is having alternates pre-designated. So if Commissioner Legg can't make Appearance Committee, then there's already an alternate, already ready to go. And I'm sure that any one of us would cover for another, if, just make the phone call, but it is important that we cover the meetings and represent these various committees here at the board, so. That's just something to think about, maybe in the future, just either having pre-designated alternates.
We did that previously, we always had a backup, so that way there would be somebody to fall back on.
That might be good.
Yeah, that worked out very well.
We did that before, so that could be something we can initiate also with this board.
But that's, I think that's all I have, Madam Mayor, appreciate it.
I think one thing, too, that those of you that went to Pet Fest and to the farmer's market on Saturday, Southview was there with their ag and their plants, Grace Creek High School was there, but there was a lot of people there that handmade things, but they also had a lot of fresh baked items, so it was kinda neat. It was a lot of women working from home, and so it gave them an opportunity of a location that they could sell their wares. The Pet Fest, something that was not mentioned, was that you got yourself a shopping bag and you filled it up with anything you needed for your pet. They had samples of any kind of dog food that you can imagine, any kind of snack, and so, and they didn't run out. It was like everybody was with all those animals here, they were going up and getting any kind of snack they wanted. So Naturally Unleashed did a great job with the planning of it, and also FAPS, which they did have several pets that were adopted. So it was a good day. I enjoyed being here for all of it, and I think just the fact that there's so many animals and so many people that came out, and our staff. The staff that worked on Saturday spent long hours here because it opened, the farmer's market opened at 9:00, and they had to come early to set it up, and then everything wasn't over till late afternoon. So it was a day filled, but it was a fun day. I think everybody that was a part of it enjoyed it. There is a Chamber Business Breakfast, and this is at 8:30 on Wednesday. It is at the Crossings or the Harmony. The breakfast will be, I don't want to say catered, but done by the chef that works there. So it's an opportunity, if you will, Chamber Business Breakfast at 8:30. The other thing, I too would like to thank Mr. Bill McQueen for the photography and the videos, because I think you shared all those things that our Veterans Commission did in a great way. And I think they need that recognition, too, for their hard work and all the events that they've sponsored, so great job. Appreciate looking at those, and appreciate being able to share them on my side also. And again, we appreciate everyone being here this evening. We will have our next board meeting on June 17th. And prior to that, of course, we have the Food Truck Rodeo on the 6th, which that is this Thursday. Anything else good for the team?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your say aye. I work, thank you so much.